I'd like to call the Thursday, August 15th, 2019, special meeting to order. And at this time, would you stand for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance by Ms. Atkinson? Amen. Ms. Atkinson?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. And at this time, Ms. Atkinson, would you read the mission statement?
The mission of the Portsmouth Public School Division is to engage all students in learning that will foster academic excellence and responsible citizenship.
Thank you. Next item is Madam Clerk. The attendance, please.
Ms. Allen.
Present.
Ms. Atkinson?
Here.
Mr. Barnes?
Here.
Mrs. Hines?
Here.
Mr. Pann?
Here.
Well, we have a quorum. You have received a copy of the agenda. What is the board's pleasure?
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been made, and second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. And I'm going to try to do a lot of the items by consent agenda so that we can streamline. All right. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Pann?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Ms. Atkinson, would you call us in a closed session, please?
I move that the board enter into a closed meeting under the provisions of Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia for the following purpose: consideration of a student disciplinary matter as permitted under subsection A. 8.2.
Motion's been read.
Second.
There's a second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Allen.
Present.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Pann?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
We're now in closed session. All right. Board members, I would like to adjust the agenda because we have a board member that needs to leave early, and we need to act on these items. If you look at 3.2, 3.5, 3.7, 312, 313, 314, 315, 316, 317, 318, and 319. So if we could go to item 3.2, consideration of expulsion, case number 201819/24.
Move for approval.
Present.
Motion's been made, and second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk, the recommendation is for expulsion.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Pann?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
All right, we're going to go to the minutes. Approval of June 13th and June 20th minutes. Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Present.
Motion's been made, and second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Pann?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
3.7, consideration of a resolution to name the Virginia pilot Sarah Gregory to the 2019 Virginia School Board Association's media honor roll. Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Motion's been made.
Present.
There's a second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Pann?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
If you look at 312, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 18, we can do those.
19.
If you've had, ma'am?
19.
Well, that's, we can do 19. We can do all of those by consent vote, if you feel comfortable without discussion. I, of course, I've read through all of them. I hope that you've had an opportunity to read through them. 312 is the amendment of authorization to act on behalf of supplemental retirement plans. 313 is a resolution to amend the grant fund budget. Mr. Falk can answer those questions. We've been through that before. The consideration resolution for a reappropriation request, general fund, the textbook fund, the pre-funded state grants, risk management, and the cafeteria fund, and then the consideration to utilize cooperative contract E19479797 with the basic auto sales to provide automobiles.
All of them except for 318.
Okay.
I mean, 319.
Okay.
Because I have something regarding that one.
Okay.
So how do you want me to, how do we need to read the move for approval?
I think you would, my suggestion would be a motion would be made to consider items 3.12 through 3.18. I think that's the correct one. As consent agenda items.
Okay.
And that motion would be voted on. If passed, then there'd be a motion to approve by consent. That will be a separate motion.
Okay. I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion, and then I just want to ask a clarifying question, and then, because we can't discuss it until we get there. So I move to approve 3.12 through 3.18 as consent agenda items.
Okay.
Second.
There's a second. Any discussion?
Mr., sorry, Mr. Falk, to clarify, these are funds that are sent to us specifically for these purposes, correct? We're talking textbook fund, general fund, prestate, risk management, cafeteria. All those are delegated monies that can't be moved or adjusted anyplace else. This is where they live. This is where they retire. This is where they vacation.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay? Just need to clarify.
And the general and the grant fund balance, we've had the blessing of the people, the city, I mean, we don't want to go through what we went through with this grant.
Grant funds, they're the 1920 increases to grants. So what we're doing is we're bringing forward increases as we get them from the VDOE. So what you'll see this year is probably we'll have some grant increases or decreases at probably every other meeting because we get them at least once a month. So we're starting that process now.
And you and the city are working together on it.
Yes, sir.
I just don't want what we went, what you had to go through.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions regarding any of the other items? So we're voting?
So we're voting now to approve, putting them on a consent agenda, then we'll vote to approve them.
Okay.
Need a second.
It was a second.
I thought I did second.
Second, ma'am.
And there's, we call for discussion, and Mrs., now we're ready for the vote.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Pann?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Now, we're going to vote.
They need a motion to approve items 3.12 through 3.18 by consent.
Move to approve consent.
Present.
Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Pann?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Now, we take 3.19. This is consideration to utilize cooperative contract at basic auto sales to provide automobiles. Ms. Atkinson, you want to address that?
Well, I had discussion on it. I was wondering why we were going with a cooperative contract versus doing a, I think it's either ITB or RFP for a local dealership, which would have gave us a lower price on this. So why we're using a co-op versus local dealerships?
If I could respond to that, for this particular contract, this contract's a state contract. It has a lot of safeguards in it that you may not get from a local dealership, like the age of the car, the mileage of the car, the warranty on the car, as well as a standardization of what you're buying, and the prices standardized within the contract. When you're buying cars, sometimes dealerships may not be able to get the same number of cars. This particular contract, this vendor has the ability to get any number of cars. It's the predominant way that most schools and people in the state, in the state as well, procure their vehicles. And it's faster as well. It speeds up the time that you can get them, and you know you're getting a quality product, and you have the backing of the state with all the guidelines that are there. You may not have that with the local dealership. You may, but they don't have the same volume where they can get the cars that you may need in a timely fashion, in some cases.
And I just want to follow up with, we haven't tried that. I know it's a lot of, this area is full of large dealerships that would be able to give that same offering with the warranty, the mileage, with zero miles, the same offering. And I just don't think this supports our MWBE that we're going with a cooperative contract when we could utilize dealerships in the 757 and give them the opportunity to beat that price as well as provide those vehicles.
So there are two vendors, Bannister Nissan and Utown Automotive. Both companies indicate that they can supply the used vehicles, and then the last pair of, the justification for the cooperative contract does not satisfy the requirements of MWBE policy. So...
But we're still supporting minority and women-owned businesses through this contract?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
My question is, are all of our current vehicles currently in use that we have?
I can't, I don't, I can speak to that. This, you'll come back.
This particular order is for the attendance officers and the additional attendance officers that were approved in last month's, last year's, this year's budget at the end of last school year. Currently, they have two cars, I believe, in the attendance officer fleet. We've more than doubled the number of attendance officers, so for them to share two cars is problematic for them executing their job duties, as the board has directed them to do, with the goal of improving student attendance and accreditation rates with that attendance requirement. The other thing is, the cars that are currently used by the attendance officers, I believe, are early 90s Crown Victorias. They've lost their, they're out of their useful life cycle and very much need to be replaced. So this slate of vehicles will give all of the attendance officers a vehicle to use in their day-to-day operations. They're being outfitted with 4G computers, so they, the car will be their office. And I believe it leaves one in reserve in case of breakdown.
So for the entire division, though, not just the attendance officers, are all cars that we have under our used division, why not necessarily allocate it towards attendance officers? Do we have every car that we could possibly have in use, in use?
Yes. Yeah, we've, some, I think, two years ago or three years ago, we had a $400,000 White Fleet vehicle buy. All of those cars are in use. We have several utility vehicles that need to be replaced now. Food Services has replaced their vehicles, but when we buy a vehicle, we don't keep any in reserve. So as soon as we use it, it's put out into the fleet and used on a daily basis.
And will maintenance be done by the city for these vehicles as well?
Yes, they'll be added to the city maintenance contract.
Will that increase any of our costs that we pay for fleet maintenance by adding additional vehicles to it?
It would have to.
Well, it shouldn't because we're contract, regular maintenance is contracted rate for all of the vehicles. If there's a major breakdown, say a transmission goes, these vehicles would be, my understanding, be covered by warranty, and the manufacturer would cover those.
But adding additional vehicles does not add additional costs to the fleet management that we're, that the city takes care of for us?
I don't, I don't believe it's itemized by this flat rate.
Yeah, it wasn't a specific number in that agreement.
Okay.
Chairman Pann?
Yes.
I just want to clarify what you said, that using this cooperative contract does not satisfy the requires, requirements of the MWBE policy. And we have dropped significantly in our utilization for MWBEs, and I don't see why we would elect to go with this co-op when we have two businesses that's here, local, a woman-owned business, and then a minority-owned business that said they would be able to supply the vehicles. So why are we using a co-op in Allentown, Virginia?
I can't answer that question because Bannister and Utown... Ms. Allen?
While we figure this out, do we have to vote on this, or can this be sent back? And if we do send it back, will it cause an issue with?
Well, I was going to ask.
Timeline of getting cars later, you know, because we don't have another meeting until after school starts, so at this point.
If we go with the co-op?
No, I was saying if we send the contract back.
Send the contract back.
Right. But I mean, I'm saying if we vote on the co-op, we can get the cars, if we go with the other two, we can get the cars.
If we go with the other two, we'd obviously have to do an RFP, and that would have to stay on the street for a certain amount of time. They're not co-op. And so it would take an additional amount of time. I couldn't tell you how long because they would have to be able to procure those types of vehicles that we need. But it would take additional time.
So the RFP would be 10 days?
Yeah.
Five days?
Twenty-one days.
Twenty-one days? So schools started, and then you've got, then you got a ward...
They could do a 10-day.
We don't have a shortage of vehicles, though. Like, if there's something that's needed, like, right away?
Minimum amount is 10 days.
So we wouldn't be able to do anything until the end, September meeting, hopefully not the October. Yes, ma'am.
How many attendance officers do we have on the books, ready to go first day of school? Because I thought we only approved, okay, I thought we had approved two. Okay, so we...
We already had four.
Oh, we already had four?
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, I did say double. You're right. That was a good catch.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we have no vehicles that they could utilize until we work this situation out?
That's correct.
There is one.
Yeah, there's the one that I mentioned.
It's a green Crown Vic circa 1990s.
I mean, and I understand it. I guess...
Right. The answer's one.
I guess the question that I have is, okay, it's the beginning of the school year. Do we really risk running into an attendance situation a month in, as opposed to making sure that we do the right thing by the contract and making sure that we're in order? How bad can the attendance situation get from the first day of school to the end of the month while we work this out? It's just a question, a thought process. I would like to make sure that we do our due diligence, because this is a three-year situation. Am I not correct?
It's two years.
Two, yeah. Come on? I think it said two.
Till 2020. With the option to renew for three additional years. So...
Well, we still have the 15-day rule, so we got to find, I mean, the kids that are on row that haven't shown up, we got to find them.
Right, so it's still enough time.
Okay.
The way I read it is to use a cooperative contract, if somebody else has already done your bidding and got the lowest price. My concern is that, is that if we went into negotiation on our own, we're not going to get six cars for $121,000. Our price and our timeline just got pushed back and just got pushed up. When you read this, it says that it does support the SWAM at the state level, which is the, to me, the small minority-owned and the small woman-owned. We're still doing our part that we could, and we're getting it at its best price because this company probably provides three-quarters of the state with cars at this price. So while it doesn't meet our MWBE percentages, it still is going with the essence of the, of our policy that I believe, and so I'll be support, I'll, I'll be supporting this purchase.
I just want to comment, it doesn't, and that's why Gwen Davis put that...
It doesn't, it doesn't satisfy our MWBE, but when you read later in, it does say...
Our policy. It doesn't satisfy our policy.
Right.
Did you have your hand up?
Just for, since your MWBE, what's the clarification between the two?
The clarification is, it doesn't satisfy our policy per Portsmouth Public Schools. So it will not go towards our numbers statewide, it would, but for, per our policy, it doesn't satisfy our policy. And if you look into that, we can't say that a local dealership will not beat it unless we put out a RFP and try, because the state bidders don't always get the best rates. I mean, just because you're a co-op doesn't mean you negotiated the best deal. You probably would, with the flow of the rest of everybody, it doesn't mean you got the best deal on the vehicles.
Although I...
It's, Chairman, it's just not good that we're not supporting local businesses, and that's our policy.
And we certainly have been advocating, supporting local businesses as long as we can. In other words, when can this be back on the agenda? September or October? What's your best guess as when we can, this can come back if we don't vote on the cooperative grant?
At the earliest, probably September, the second September meeting, possibly.
Right.
That would be tight.
Right.
It would probably be more realistic in October, to be honest with you.
We should have those issues, then.
Because obviously, you have to evaluate the RFPs, then you have to, we may have to meet with the offerers, because we may not have any knowledge of them. We want to make sure you know who you're doing business with.
Right.
And that the terms that they're written, you understand them the way that you think you do. So, you know, it, it could be a lengthy process, not 10 months, but, you know, at least a month. Once you get it on the street, get the responses back, and then evaluate, and then have your meetings there, so.
All right. Twenty-one days, we're in the middle of September. Then you've got to, then that, it may not be able to, we may not be able to make it for the September, or the second meeting.
Right.
Because you got to do your due diligence. So then it's on the docket for October, the first meeting in October. So we've got a whole month that we're going to delay this, and we've got, what, two? One vehicle? One person will not have a vehicle? Is that right?
Five.
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 Boy, we're in a, oof. Although I don't really, I agree with, with Ms. Atkinson, because I really believe we need to support MWBE, but because of the length, I, I just think now we've got to move forward. I think we have to move forward, although I don't want to move forward with the cooperative contract. I'll, I'll vote for the cooperative contract this time.
We can.
But I, I really, I agree with her. I think that we've got two vendors, but the timeline is just, we're in a crunch. Yes.
Just in the event that this comes up, something similar to this, again, how do we ensure that we have enough timeframe so that we're not having to make a decision?
Yes.
Because we're in a crunch situation. I don't like to be put in that position, to have to make a decision, because we have to make a decision when there's questions. And I, I understand her legitimacy in what she's saying. That's why I asked for some clarification and the questions that I asked.
Well, take it.
So how do we make sure that this does not happen again?
Well, you've got, you've got Dr. Bracy here, and you've got his staff, that we, we have things like this. It's got to be in a timely fashion that we get, we receive it so we can make a decision that we don't have, I, tonight, I feel rushed. I mean, I agree that we, we need to be in compliance with our own policy, and now you're asking us not to be in compliance with our own policy because we can go with the cooperative grant that can provide the vehicles in a timely manner, which will get them, school starts, and everybody will have a vehicle. That's the predicament, Weir. I agree with you. Yes, ma'am.
And Chairman Pann, it's what board member Allen said. I mean, what issue are we going to have in the first week of September as far as attendance?
First month.
I mean, first month. I mean, we have one car. I mean, we, I'd rather figure it out that way versus making a decision on this. This is, without being offensive, a co-op is lazy to me. It's, it's basically copy and paste. When you have to do a RFP, you have to go...
I understand, yeah.
And do the work for it. So when we do the co-ops, it's actually an easy fix, and that's not what I want to see. I want to see us go out and support, again, local businesses. And in the first month, that's not going to hurt our attendance missing. I mean, are we really going to be out, our attendance officers on the first month, searching? In the first two weeks, you're still trying to figure out if that's, if the kids are in school, what's going on. So the first two weeks is basically not even counted.
You continue. Go ahead.
Dr. Bracy, I was wondering if we could ask Dr. Cormarty to kind of give us some insight as to attendance clerks and attendance officers within the first month of school, as to what it looks like, what it feels like, so that we understand the decisions being made here?
Well, we've restructured some of the duties, and we've increased the number of officers we have because the volume of work was too great to get accomplished by the people we had on the ground. To be preemptive, September's an important month to get ahead of attendance woes. I mean, we've got, not sensitive, or not to be insensitive to any of the points that have been made here, but we've also got policies and procedures that say that after unexcused absence X, they'll receive a visit from an attendance officer.
Right.
If we don't do that, then there, again, we've not done something...
I think it's 15 days. You have to do it within 15 days.
So it's hard to predict the volume of absenteeism we're going to have in the month of September. I can tell you that we are going to have absenteeism in the month of September that's going to need to be addressed. To what extent and specific numbers, I wouldn't dare try to predict that for fear of being inaccurate, but we will have calls to visit homes in September due to attendance.
Is it possible that we can delay this until September, and then we can pay the attendance officers, we can pay their mileage until this is resolved? Is that, is that feasible?
Would you pay for that?
I mean, in other words, they'd use their own vehicle and...
Would be a priority.
Because I don't know any other way. I mean, other than they, we don't do anything. And I, and I do know September 30th is a very critical, because you take, you got to have attendance by September 30th.
Absolutely.
Yes, ma'am.
My only other concern would be if we, if we did put it out, I see the other side, if we did put it out as RFP, if we do not find a cheaper rate, then we've, we've kind of messed ourselves up again. And it goes back to my original question as to how do we make sure that this does not happen again? Because it, unfortunately, it looks like we're going to have to be pressured into going with this contract, which, again, it's rushed. I don't want to see us start a pattern of rushed contracts. We knew we were bringing on more people, and we kind of knew we were needing more vehicles because we were bringing on more people. I don't know what kind of timeframe this takes to put this co-op situation together. Was there a discussion with our MWBE partnership in regards to, we're about to make this big purchase, how are we ensuring that we meet our policy while making sure we get the best rate?
I agree with you. Dr. Bracy?
Ms. Davis did submit the information that you're reading as far as that those two companies want to be able to provide those vehicles. I don't, I don't know if you're saying it was a discuss in the MWBE committee meeting. She wouldn't, she wouldn't do that at the meeting. I want to address the fact of the cooperative contracts themselves, because what I'm hearing
themselves, because what I'm hearing is that you don't want us to bring any more cooperative contracts. You would prefer, and I'm not putting words in your mouth, but it's, but what we're hearing is that you don't want to see any more cooperative contracts. And the reason we look at the cooperative contracts because those, as you said, already done, and most of the time, cost-wise, you get the best rate from them. But we want to be clear as far as moving forward. I'm sure the procurement offices, the office looked at that as a means of, this is going to be the most economical way to get this done, as they've done with other co-op contracts that you all have approved. We knew that we were increasing the number of attendance officers. We knew that. But they also knew that here's a contract that's already been done, look at the costs, and we can go with it. I understand about the MWBE piece as well, but I, what I need so that I can share with them is that what is the procedure that you would like us to do? Because if doing cooperative contracts is not doing our due diligence, let us know so that we can make sure that we're satisfying what the board wants us to do.
I'm not saying not to bring cooperative contracts. I guess for me, in hearing and what my colleague has expressed her concerns, my feeling is making sure that we've done everything possible to satisfy our policy.
Right.
Which would include whatever the MWBE situation is. So, I also don't want to be in a situation where there is questions that have been raised, but we still have to go ahead and vote.
Right.
So, it's not that I don't want there to be a cooperative contract. I want us to have the best rates, whatever the case may be. But there are questions raised that are , that are, I had questions, Ms. Hackenson had questions. So at this point, we can't get any answers. And was there a way to find out whether or not Bannister or the other company could have provided those vehicles at a cheaper rate or at the same rate, which would have also, if I'm not mistaken, satisfied our requirement?
But you have to do an RFP.
We'd have to do an RFP to do that.
Right. So it goes back to lending itself timeframe-wise. It all comes down to time.
Timely.
So...
That's your question, really. How can we, how can we avoid this in the future? We need, it needs to be done in a timely manner.
Can I address the timeframe?
Please.
This was a need that we identified early in the summer, and we didn't have a board meeting in that timeframe.
In July.
Which is why we're bringing it to you now. It's not to rush you through. It was that we identified the need at that point.
And I, and I do understand that, but the budget we approved was back in, what, May?
May.
Which we knew we were hiring additional people at that point. So, with the, with the budget before it was approved, we still knew that that was a desire for us to have additional people. So I just am saying, we start to be a little bit more, a little, little bit more thinking proactively that we kind of knew this was coming. Even if we stay at the flat rate, budget-wise, we were still budgeted to bring on two additional people, which would have still needed us to have additional vehicles. That's all that I'm saying. And at the end of the day, we still are forced to vote on a contract that there is still some concerns about.
And the other thing, too, is that was there any way that you could have gotten it on the agenda for June? Because our June 23rd meeting...
But we hadn't, we didn't, we had issued an RFP at that point, excuse me. So, probably that would have had to be done a little earlier if we did go out and do an RFP, so.
Okay. All right.
Chairman, I just want to say, Dr. Bracy, I'm not against co-ops. The last co-op we voted on was the food, I think that was through Cisco, if I'm not mistaken. And I don't think there was any local businesses that could have competed with what Cisco was offering us. So I'm not against a co-op if that's the only thing available in the area.
Mr. Barnes, do you have any, do you have any comments?
Well, my only comment is that unfortunately, more recently, we've had a lot of incidents where we had to vote on things last minute when we found our last minute information. And frankly, I'm kind of getting really tired of that. So with that being said, I'm voting no to this.
Okay. All right. Any more discussion? Yes, ma'am?
Just listening to consensus of the board, what happens if this contract dies? What's the next step?
Goes back to...
Okay.
Send it back to...
I would like to put it out just for information. If it goes to RFP, it will be open to anybody who wishes to submit a proposal and not just the two that were identified.
Goes to...
It'll be wide open.
And if I could add to that, Mr. Chairman, the comment here that says they could provide the vehicles is not an indication that they wish to have submitted a bid. It was, I believe, a phone call that, can you provide vehicles, not an invitation to submit a bid, had it been open to an RFP. Is that correct, Mr. Fogg?
Yes, sir. Okay. All right. Hearing no more discussion, Madam Clerk. Roll call vote.
Deveron Bush.
Oh, we had, we had a motion.
I made the motion.
Nobody has seconded it.
Who seconded the motion again?
Yeah, did you second it? Did you just say that?
He seconded the motion.
Well, we had to second it to have discussion about it, right?
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Okay.
And no, discussion went on. So we've already had a motion and seconded, so we've discussed it. Now would you?
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Zackinson?
No.
Mr. Barnes?
Nope.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Oh, y'all are so lovely. Yes, I don't want to do that, but to expedite this, yes.
Three yes votes, no passes.
But, please understand that we need to have, we need to have this in a timely manner so that we're not rushed, don't like to be rushed in making decisions. Because what you, what we've just done as a board, we violated our own policy. And I don't like that. So, but we've got to move on.
Chairman Parent?
Yes, ma'am.
I just would like to see a report on that September attendance.
Okay, sure.
And what's being done as far as that in that month of September, the mileage and everything. I would like to know, because we voted on something because September was said to be a crucial one. So I would like to see that report.
Absolutely. Okay, we have taken care of those items that need that. And Ms. Hackenson, if you have to leave, then we take care...
We'll do 15 more minutes.
Okay, all right. The next item would go back up to 3.3, which is the active shooter drill. Dr. Bracy?
Yes.
When we go into the...
Yeah, we're the only ones that can go in there.
Needs to move.
Yeah.
First 15 days, 15 days of school. Students that are on your roll that don't show up, we've got to give them...
So, Dr. Patton, our city manager, is here this evening, and she will introduce the speakers for this evening.
Yes. Good evening.
Good evening.
Chairman Parent, Vice Chair Patilio, and members of the Portsmouth Public School Board. Tonight, we have Chief Angela Green, and we have a presentation by Sergeant Dyer entitled "Active Threat." All of us who are present here in this room know that active threats are very, very real. And we're taking it very seriously in preparation for anything that may occur within our city. As the chief and I were out talking, as you all were meeting, that none of us would have imagined that yesterday in Philadelphia, one citizen had more ammunition than the police, and that that citizen could have kept police at bay for at least days. So active threats are very real. The presentation this evening is entitled "Active Threat", and Sergeant Robert Dyer is the presenter. Sergeant Dyer is a United States Army veteran who served a combat tour supporting Operation Iraqi Freedom. He has been with the Portsmouth Police Department for over 13 years. Sergeant Dyer is a team leader for the SWAT team, and has been with the team for over 10 years, and is currently assigned at the Street Crimes Unit, of which he serves as supervisor. Sergeant Dyer has over 125 hours of active shooter training. That includes being an advanced law enforcement, rapid response training certified instructor, an active attack, integrated response certified instructor, as well as a citizen response and active shooter event certified instructor. Sergeant Dyer additionally has successfully completed the Department of Homeland Security Active Shooter Preparation Workshop. On last evening, on Monday night, Sergeant Dyer presented what he's presenting to you all tonight, to the members of City Council. And after he finishes his presentation, he would like to take the members of the school board into the chamber and give specific instructions to those, the members of the school board who are up on the dimes. Sergeant Dyer.
Good, how you doing?
All right. Do I need to step so, I know these chairs are kind of hot. I know everybody ate, so if we can stay awake, I won't bore you to death. Couple things about this PowerPoint. One, it's kind of, it's a, it's a good measuring instrument to see where we are in the city of Portsmouth, both police and fire. And it should give you some confidence, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to be...
Let me get out of your way, I'm sorry.
It should give you some confidence to know that we are prepared to come to your schools in the unfortunate event that something like this to happen. Just to start off with a, with a question, anybody, anybody know the largest occurrence of active shooter, commercial, entertainment venue, school?
Vegas or...
Vegas.
The movie theater.
What type of event? Do we think it's at a school? Do we think it's at a commercial event? Do we think it's at a commerce?
Entertainment event.
Entertainment event?
Yeah.
That seems to be the rising trend. In fact, the majority of active shooter events happen in places of commerce. So that's a good thing, seeing that I'm addressing the school board. And it's over 50%. So commerce, and commerce is a broad spectrum. It covers businesses, it covers your entertainment venues, it covers things like that. So Alert, what is Alert? Alert, it was created in 2002 in Texas. As most specialties in any profession, there are specialties along the way. There was not a specific specialty in responding to active shooter incidents. And what I mean by that is, so you may be, we have officers that their specialty is DUIs. Some are drugs, some are bank fraud, whatever it may be, there's specialized training that they can go to. And a lot of it is standardized throughout the United States. We didn't have anything like that for active shooter incidents at all. So University of Texas, or Texas State University and surrounding jurisdictions came up with this program, and they implemented the best possible practices based off statistics, concepts, and training principles to come up with this all-inclusive program. In 2013, the FBI recognized that the program was very well put together. They endorsed it, and they started putting their agents to it. They further endorsed it as the national standard across the United States. I was fortunate to spend a week up in Quantico for the Alert Level One instructor class. Great people, great training. Spent another 10 days in Lynchburg. And from those courses, and being able to network people, with people that were at Parkland, SWAT team leaders that were at Las Vegas, that they were actually on the ground, on the scene with these, with these large-scale incidents, compared to the training that they were receiving side by side with me, they absolutely hand down, hands down endorsed these tactics. So that should give you some confidence that we definitely have the right thing going if it happens to happen at a school locally. As far as the city of Portsmouth, the first classes of Alert were integrated with PPD and the Fire Department of June 2019. We have done three. We have a class Saturday, which will be the fourth, and the final class will be in August 22nd. Of these classes, 12-hour classes, enhanced medical, really, really important. It's not just EMTs and not just firemen that can provide medical aid. It's also the police officers. So during some of this enhanced training, they're getting treat, they're getting training in massive hemorrhage, wound packaging, or wound packing, opening an airway, and hypothermia mitigation. So they can apply tourniquets, they can apply occlusive dressings, they can apply and actually pack wounds. We have training aids that actually give them that hands-on experience where they can do that type of thing. Incident Unified Command training, super important. Somebody has to manage that chaos, inside and outside. Somebody has to be in charge. We, this program is put together so that the officer that responds, the blue and white with no rank, the guy doing all the work, he can manage the incident at face value until somebody can come along and it gets to that level. And that's just with us trying to train for success. Threshold assessment and tactics, those are just police tactics. Instead of just running into a room with a shooter, there's other ways to evaluate those threats. And lifelike practical scenarios with police firing EMS. So you see, you see here, there's some, some blood, some moulage, some of our role players. They're fully outfitted in moulage, they are given scripts, they follow the scripts. It is as lifelike as possible. The scenario is run from the police dispatch over the radio, all the way to loading patients into the ambulance, all the way to conclusion. That sounds like a lot, and it is. Logistically, it's a nightmare to get done. We're having classes from anywhere from 25 to 50, on top of about 18, 18 firemen and medics. But it's a great training scenario, and we get to work together, which is great. How it works? So this is just a very simplified version of how the program puts two and two together. It puts police and fire together. Dispatch receives a call of an active shooter. Dispatch works where they dispatch the police on one side, is typically one dispatcher, and then fire has its own dispatcher. They sit in the same room, however. They would put the call out together. Both get the same information. Typically, the fire department will stage at any, any scene of violence. So say a gunshot wound. They'll park down the street a couple blocks until the scene is safe. They have no protection, they don't have guns, they're there, they're safe people. The city has purchased them ballistic equipment. They will wear a vest with a front panel, a side panel, two side panels, and a rear panel. The equipment that they wear will stop more rounds of higher caliber than what your everyday police officer wears, period. Period. So they are very well protected. But there's one thing they don't have. This. That's this. And that's where that partnership comes in. So when that call goes out, they both respond. The police are going to arrive first, they're going to neutral, locate, neutralize that threat. They're going to find that shooter. Whether they get in a shootout with him, which occurs about 26% of the time, whether he takes his life, or whether he's apprehended. Typical apprehensions are about 11%. Most of the time, they take their own life. If you're doing, if you're following the statistics, which I see you are, Ms. Hines, most of them take their life. Their agenda is complete, they've gotten to a point or threshold that they, they can no longer complete their task or they're just happy with the outcome, and they will end their own life. But once that happens, and the shooter's neutralized, the police establish a warm zone. So where the shooter is during that engagement is what we call a hot zone. Hot danger, that's the similarity. Where we have contained and neutralized that, that suspect is a warm zone. It's safe enough for somebody else to come in with some protection. The police inside will locate and secure an area that the fire department can come in. Outside is the police department, and the fire department are being controlled by Unified Incident Command, a firefighter and a policeman side by side, controlling each asset. They will combine and create a rescue task force. The rescue task force consists of two policemen and normally the personnel off of a truck, which is typically going to be about three firemen. The policemen are for security, the firemen are for medical. They're going to go inside the building, and they're going to start orchestrating with a unified command how to quickly get these people out. Now, this is extremely simple, but you add chaos to this mix, and it gets very complicated. Columbine, everybody familiar with Columbine? Anybody know how long it took for police to go inside? Forty minutes. Forty minutes. And the reason was, the reason was this, there was no specialized training for these types of tactics. In 1966, the first SWAT teams were formed because a guy climbed 32, 32 floors and started shooting people from a tower on a university. And they didn't have a way to fix that. Unfortunately, it's something horrific to cause change. Columbine, they realized, the police were all there, they, super safe outside, but that was the tactic, and it was wrong. We've evolved. When the police get the call, and they have what we, what we coined the phrase as a driving force, they have gunfire, they have someone saying he's in there, they have actionable intelligence from this radio, they're going inside. They're not waiting for one, for two, for three. They are going inside that building by themselves to neutralize that threat immediately. There is no more 40 minutes. Okay? Now, that 40 minutes, let me put this, let me put this success chip out to you. We've done three classes. There has not been one class, and it is the benchmark standard that I use for the class for our department, there has not been one class that hasn't received the phone, received the dispatch, sent police in, neutralized, isolated, distracted that suspect, arranged for an RTF to come in, and had them coming out escorted into an ambulance under 10 minutes. Everybody has done it under 10 minutes by the completion of their 12-hour block. Think about the complexity of what I just said. They got the call, there are people dying. They responded, they went in, they took care of the shooter, they stopped the killing. They rendered as much aid as they could, they got rescue task force in, they stopped the dying, medical aid, right? And the third goal, rapid casualty evacuation to a higher level of care, in the ambulance, on the way out. There's no more of the tarps outside with the triage and the mass casualty, right? We are, we're doing it inside. We're safe. That's amazing. If you've ever seen anything of that scale, 10 minutes is an amazing benchmark to make. That is success. That's what that looks like.
Let me ask you this question.
Sure, Mr. Parent.
School system, that 10 minutes, if we did not have our own procedures, because we have lockdown procedures in our schools, that does help minimize what, an active shooter is in the building, and the phone call is made, then there is, there are protocols that we have to follow in the school, that, that teachers close the doors, I mean, do everything to get the kids on the... everything to get the kids on the floor, that, that helps with that 10 minutes. But if they, if we didn't have protocol in our schools, if we didn't have procedures, because we've got SROs in high school, middle school, SSOs with their, they're not armed, so they could go into an elementary school, and they don't have what, what you're wearing, that could be a situation. But we do have protocols within our schools to minimize, you know, that 10 minutes is great, but if you didn't have procedures in this, in our schools, and teachers know what to do, and administrators, then it could be worse.
Absolutely, absolutely. And that 10 minutes is not, it's not specific to a school, that 10 minutes is, is to any situation, whether it be at the movies, whether it be, you know, at the Commodore, whether it be here, whether it be anywhere, 10 minutes, that's the benchmark. In reality, it's probably gonna be higher, it's, it's gonna be faster. Obviously, the design of the building and things like that caused some issues. These elevators alone and the stairwell could take you 10 minutes, you know, depending on the day. And I laugh, but that's, that's some of the obstacles of, of what we're dealing with. In fact, I would say a school may be easier, because geographically, it's much easier to navigate, you got large hallways, it's much easier for me to take two guys and control an entire hallway than it is for me to take two guys and have, have clear every single one of these rooms. So the lockdown procedures absolutely contribute to our success, locking those doors, shutting those doors. If that door is locked and shut, and we have no actionable intelligence that they're there, we're not gonna deal with the doors. We'll hold the hallway, we're not, you know, we'll get to that later, once we bring SWAT in to systematically go to every single room. Yes, ma'am?
I was gonna ask, would it be beneficial for you to have blueprints of our buildings? Have you sat down, or has our staff sat down with you to make sure that you have what you need if you are called? Say, blueprints, or the, the easiest access into the building? Do you need to sit and have a conversation with our staff to make sure that we're all speaking the same language?
That, yeah. I didn't mean to cut you off quick. I'll tell you, this has been a stepped phase for well over a year. The Police Department, the Fire Department sat down as an active shooter committee, neither had a policy for, for it. We wrote the, we wrote the policies, we started implementing the crawl, walk, run phase. We wanted to make sure that the responding officers had a plan. We are now going to reach out to the city for an emergency action plan, buildings like this, buildings throughout the city, in the school. We need to make sure that the schools are doing the same thing at each, at each different school. And I'll tell you, other jurisdictions, not necessarily local, literally allow their principals to set whatever their guidelines are. So you could have two principals in two different, in the same city, and they have different lockdown protocol. That, that makes things very confusing, because I can assure you, right after a gunfight, the last thing you're remembering is, okay, this school puts a flyer outside the door, and this one does this, or, that can be very difficult. But we would love to sit down and have that dialogue, and make sure that you guys have an emergency action plan that is absolutely on board, and everybody is talking. Yes, ma'am?
Since you bringing this up, as far as like, when they do come, the, the team, they have a bleed kit. We had a presentation, I think, a couple of months ago. Do you think that would save more lives for us to have those kits in school?
Was it Stop the Bleed?
Yes.
Yes, and actually, that, one of the links on, at the end of it. They, they are phenomenal programs. So, not alert, alert actually advocates avoid, deny, defend. HSI, who endorses Stop the Bleed programs, is the run, hide, fight that I'm gonna get to. Absolutely. The things that are saving police officers and citizens every single day are these tourniquets. We had a pretty violent weekend not too long ago, and I think our officers applied three tourniquets, two of which were saves, to citizens, just by simply having a tourniquet, just by $27 right here, and having the training to put them on, they're nothing difficult at all. Children, in fact, I gave a presentation today to the Fire Academy and the Police Explorers, guess what we went over? Tourniquets. So that's definitely something that maybe we can look into in that dialogue. Stop the Bleed, awesome program, and there's a lot of government assistance as, as far as providing those things. And if you don't have tourniquets, there's things like proximal pressure. A knee in a junctional area, up here or down here, can significantly decrease blood flow, to the point where if you can hold on long enough to get one of those RTFs inside, that's a save, that's not a loss anymore. That is the reason that most people died in Columbine, that 40 minutes, massive hemorrhage.
The follow-up with Ms. Heinz's question, I would think that if you had an active shooter in a school, first thing you're gonna wanna know is the, is to have a blueprint of, of the school, because you're gonna, you're gonna be looking, you're gonna look for all the areas in that building where that person would be.
You think that, and I, I may be biased, because I'm a SWAT guy. First thing I wanna know is which door I can go in.
Which what?
Which door I can go in. Not all doors have access. So I'm either driving my car through it. I'm either driving my car through it, or I'm hoping somebody let me in, and that is a problem. Think about that. And it's not a solution that we're gonna have now, but it's definitely a talking point later. Blueprints are great, but I'm not looking at the blueprints when gunfire's going on. Blueprints are gonna be something well, well under control. But yes, having them accessible, we have programs on our phone and in our car where we can look at, just like the Fire Department, where hydrants are, blueprints, things like that, absolutely something that we'd wanna look at. Yes. Again, our goals, and this is a picture, this is great shot of the moulage, an officer helping him apply pressure to a second chest wound, holding a corridor, somebody taking charge in the hallway, and we're using the Dec Center, thank you, thank you, thank you, it has no air conditioning, it's very hot, thank you. But again, the goals of the program, Stop the Killing, Stop the Dying, and Rapid Casualty Evacuation. And again, so far, we've been successful with that, and that's, that's our hopes to continue that path. So what's important for you? Anybody a track star in here? Used to be, Mr. Bracy?
Dr. Bracy.
You're not a track star. I'm sure everybody can run, I'm sure everybody can run with the right stimuli. I would hope that gunfire is the right stimuli for you to run. If not, I don't know what to tell you. I would hope that most people in this room, with the exception of the three gun toters in here, like to run away from gunfire and not towards it. Yeah? It's a bit of a learned response, acquired taste to run towards it. So I hope everybody can orient themselves. If you do hear gunfire, if you do hear some sort of a threat is going on, it's kinda like when your house is on fire. You don't need to, you don't need to grab your wallet, and the pictures, and your family recipes, and everything else on your desk, or wherever you are, I just need you to pick up you, and your phone that's probably with you in your hand anyway, and leave. Hey, I need you to find exits, okay? Don't use these elevators. Why? You may never make it to the bottom. Try the stairwell, but be, be aware of the stairwell, there's a lot of people, there's a lot of haste, okay? Slow down, don't move too fast. Keep your hands visible. Why is that? What do police always look for? Hands, 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 hands. You don't have to walk around like this, but don't be reaching in your jacket when the police officer's walking in, okay? Hide, any hide-and-seek champions in here? One? Yeah. So if the opportunity is not there for you to hide, or for you to run, hide. So we could use this floor like this, you don't have a whole lot of opportunity to run, maybe some circles, right? In this door, out that door, back in this door, right? So you wanna hide. So when we say hide, we wanna be out of the view of the shooter, right? It's, it's kinda like a burglary, it's a crime of opportunity. So if you're out in the open and you're just there, you're just a victim. But if you're not out in the open, Virginia Tech, perfect example. Teacher gave his life saving his students. You know why? He barricaded the door. He was barricading the door when he got shot, and the guy did not know that he was behind the door, he just shot through the door blindly. Every one of his students escaped out that window. He bought time. I'm not asking you to escape out this window. That may cause some issues, okay? Just saying. But barricade that door, there's plenty of tables, there's plenty of chairs, there's plenty of random things that you can pile up in front of this door, okay? Don't lay in front of that door, make it difficult. He's gonna try the door, it's not gonna work, and he's gonna move on. He's there for an agenda. Speaking of being there for agenda, almost all of these shooters, more than 50%, have a connection to their work, to their violence. They have a connection. And I said this to council the other day, you, you have very broad connections, okay? Because you serve the citizens. There is a broad connection, but it could be your neighbor, it could be a coworker, it could be something, there most likely will be a connection to that person. Okay? Silence your phone, hide-and-seek champions can't win hide-and-seek when the phone keeps going off, right? They can't do that, so let's put that on vibrator silence. Call 911 when it's safe to do so. When you're sprinting down the stairwell, it's not a good time to call 911. You're gonna face plant at the end of the landing. If you do manage to call 911, keep an open line. Anybody tell me why? Dispatch is trained to listen to surrounding things, they're, they're picking up that data, and if you can just say, sixth floor City Hall, and you're whispering, they're gonna take that audible cue and say, oh, they can't talk. They're not gonna pepper you with questions, they're gonna listen. And if they hear gunfire, dispatch is telling us, we hear whispering, there is gunfire, we now know that that is where it's at, that's where we're coming. Okay? Fight, who's a fighter in here? Who's supposed to be a fighter in here? We got a couple scrappers. Mr. Barnes, I hear you. I hear you. Not necessarily as a last resort, but at the opportunity that's presented to you, okay? You, you need to, you need to live, you need to fight for your survival. If you need to pick up something, I'm sure this would feel, aw, that's disappointing.
This would hurt.
That's what we take you out. Why you upset about the goal, that's when we attack you.
There's plenty of things in here, I'm sure one of these chairs, it weighs perhaps as much as I do, will probably deter somebody, at least distract them long enough to do something, okay? Is there a fair fight?
No such thing.
Not when your life's on the line. Look at some vulnerable areas on your attacker, okay? Strengthen numbers, strengthen numbers. Courage is courageous, or courage is contagious. It takes one, takes one person to say, you know what, I'm not going out like this, and I guarantee you have 15 other people with you. But until you get that one, you 16 are gonna sit in the room and look, look silly. Prove a fact, okay? TWA flight, heading into the ground, let's roll, let's do this. If I'm going out, I'm doing it on my terms. And what happened? Right?
Yep.
Okay. Act with physical aggression and throw items. Everybody can find their physical aggression, I promise. I'm sure some of your significant others have seen it in some form or another.
Yes.
Okay? Maybe you forgot a birthday, or an anniversary, didn't take the trash out, you know, whatever. What to do when police arrive? So I told you what to do when we're not here. When we're here, I know it's written up here, remain calm and follow instructions of the officers. Do some, do some breathing for me, okay? Some slow inhales, hold for a couple seconds, exhale for a couple seconds. I promise, you'll decrease your heart rate, decrease your heart rate 20, 30 beats per minute. Once you lower your heart rate, your brain cognitive function will work a lot better as long as, along with your fine motor skills. You're gonna start to lose a lot of that stuff in the heightened emotion. Take some deep breaths, and listen. Keep your hands visible, we talked about that, right? Something really, really hard for people to understand. Understand that police may not stop immediately and render aid, especially if you're a victim, regardless of your setting. You may be in the school, and you may see plenty of victims on the floor. As long as there is still a shooter in that school taking lives, the priority is to stop the killing, and then stop the dying. We can't do anybody any good if we don't stop it. And that's hard to grasp, that's hard for parents, that's hard for anybody that has a kid. It's hard for us as officers to walk past people. I don't know if you noticed, those are, those are children, some of them as role players. We purposely do that to our officers to inoculate them to that stress. They take that home with them, so mentally, they have to prepare for that. Okay? Utilize any medical training that you or others have. Does anybody have any medical training in here? What you got, combat lifesaver?
I'm a medic in the military, I did a year in nursing school, I'm BLS CPR certified, and I've been in, I think that's it.
All right, just be where she is, you're fine.
I'll keep you alive until somebody comes.
So you're a great resource, right? But you can be a resource multiplier too, because you can direct other people to do things. Hey, hold pressure here.
I'm bossy.
Heck, that's fine, that's a great time for it, I promise. No, listen, they will listen. Hey, get him off the floor, he's going into shock. Hey, roll him on his side in the recovery position. Hey, you probably shouldn't waste your time with him, hold pressure on that one, okay? Ask wherever you are, who has any medical training? Use that resource to your advantage. Again, she brought up the Stop the Bleed program, and that's at the end here.
Don't let me down, don't tell me.
That's an awesome program that you guys may wanna look into, and if you're already doing it, that's great, I encourage it. And again, HSI's Run, Hide, Fight. One quick thing that I do wanna mention, very, very smart people in this room, okay? And we all fall into the same trap, we don't mentally prepare. And the tendency for, for human beings, especially American Westerners, is we rationalize everything. And what I mean by that is, very close to us, Virginia Beach, okay? Guy is walking through the parking lot in broad daylight with a whole pistol, whole silencer, walking through, executed somebody, just still walking. The rationalization through people's minds from witness statements and interviews was a, oh, there's an active shooter scenario coming up that weekend, I just thought he was there early, it was prop. That's true, I'm not telling this, I'm not telling you this to scare you, okay? Later on, he's shooting, it's a little more muffled, there, there's some dramatization in the movies as far as silencers and how loud they really are, they're actually significantly pretty loud, you'd definitely be able to know what it was. The rationalization was, oh, there's probably some construction work going on. They're inside and don't ever get interrupted by construction work outside. Have you seen those buildings? Okay? We're creatures of habit, though, and we don't like change. And when something comes into our minds like that, we want that, we want that square to fit into that circle no matter what, and we become oblivious. TSA does a really, really good job of a slogan that I steal, if you see something, say something. Okay? You see something, say something. You need to be aware of your surroundings to make it known. I'd much rather come to your school 100 times a day because you're paranoid, than for me to not come the one time because you were scared to call. Furthermore, on the mental preparation, you need to plan these things. Everybody in this room can walk around your house with a blindfold on, and make it to the kitchen, to the bathroom, probably to the car, get your keys, pick up your purse, all blindfolded, because you've done it a thousand times. You don't have to think about it. But I need you to think about a plan in case that you are somewhere, whether it be your workplace every day, whether it be at a meeting twice a month, whether it be at the school that you like to visit, the cafeteria that you're having lunch with the kids. You need to think about it before it happens. And when it happens, you will already have a plan in place, it's one less thing for you to think about on that checklist, right? Any questions for me? Not a single question for me?
I'll give, it, it's more of a personal connection to this, where it makes it real. I teach high school in another division, so I'm a high school teacher, I'm a board member, I have, I have a son. And he came home after they did their first lockdown drill last year. And he's been in kindergarten, first grade, he's in second grade now, and he came home and I'm like, so, you know, what exciting happened today, you know? Did you get into, what'd you do on the playground, blah, blah, blah? And he's like, well, we had a lockdown drill. And I said, oh, well, talk to me about that. And so he, he walked me through the instructions, and I said, well, what was, you know, what does your teacher do? Well, she locks the door and she protects us. That's what he said. And then he looked at me, he did that three-second switch, he said, you're a teacher, you're there to protect your kids. What do you do, mommy, to protect the kids? And so now, when, when he goes places, he had that switch, and he's like, where do we get out? Who are we gonna help? How can we help this and that and the third? So you have to be kind of in those situations for you to understand the importance of it. And I think it was about a year and a half ago, Dr. Patton, I don't know if she's still in here, correct me if I'm wrong, we had a presentation at Norcom High School, where basically it was Run, Hide, Fight. And it was about three months after Parkland, and like I said, I teach high school, and Parkland was a high school. And so the day after Parkland, we had, I call it circle time, like kindergartners have, but to have it with 16 and 17-year-olds is another, and I showed them Run, Hide, Fight. And they're like, well, what do you mean, they're not coming to save me? And they're like, "Well, what do you mean? They're not coming to save me." I'm like, "If you don't have a gun in your hand, honey, you are not number one on their list, you know? You gotta get the gun first." And that is a switch that you have to get people to understand as well. So I appreciate it because I'm a teacher, and I also have a kid in the system, and I coach baseball, so I've got lots of kids that are, you know, in the system as well. So this is near and dear to my heart, so thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you for your time.
Now, at this time, does board members... What do we have to do?
Well, amazingly enough, under the Open Meetings Law, there is a subsection 19, Discussion of Plans to Protect Public Safety, that is a valid closed session topic. So I would suggest that some one of our members make a motion to enter a closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711, Subsection 19...
Can you read that slower, sir? Yep.
A19 for discussion of plans to protect public safety as it relates to terrorist activity. And then you can do what you need to do.
I move that the board moves into a closed session pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3711A19 for a discussion on public safety, terrorism, et cetera. Second.
Discussion. Hearing no discussion. Madam Clark, roll call vote.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Pena?
Yes.
So we're now in closed session.
Move that we enter into an open session congruent with the reason we went into closed session to begin with, 2.2-3711A19, public safety.
Yes.
Second. Do the second.
Oh, second.
Your motion is actually to certify that the only matters discussed were matters that were authorized under that code section.
Do I need to say that out loud?
No, we just said it, and you said that was your motion.
So moved.
Ms. Allen?
I concur, yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Pena?
Yes.
Next item, Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. Dr. Bracy. Oh, Mr. Falk is here. And Ms. Park.
And Ms. Park.
There we go.
Chair, we want you to present this to the finance department, the certificates from the Finance Association.
So, Parks has...
That's just the certificate itself. Mr. Falk?
Okay.
I'll come with you.
The law says we can continue to conduct...
Marissa?
Parks and... Because we had a call started.
On behalf of the Board, the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada, award of financial reporting achievement to Marissa D. Parks.
They get all that Washington State. So that was an interesting discussion.
This is Government Finance Officers Association, certificate of achievement and excellence in financial reporting. The School Board for its comprehensive annual financial report, fiscal year ending June 30 of 2018, and signed by the Executive Director.
Well done.
You're a better internet provider than I do, because I would never be able to go live.
He moves in quickly.
I got Verizon too, but as soon as I go in the elevator...
Oh, yeah.
I lose it.
It's because you're in concrete.
Yeah. But he's always live, and he's got Verizon too.
All right. Teacher morale survey results. Would be Dr. Ziegler.
Yes, sir. Good evening, board members, and thank you all for your warm congratulations today. This evening, I'm gonna present to you discussion on survey results, morale survey results.
What did you say?
They skipped Eveready.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Draft. 2020 School Board meeting dates. All of you got a copy. What I'd like, in Mr. Barnes' suggestion, I would like for us to explore having these meetings instead of schools and rec centers. And that's gonna cause Mr. Ziegler, Dr. Bracy, your staff, to look at rec centers that would have Wi-Fi. I know that we would not be able to do live streaming, but...
I'll be laughing.
But I think that if we could, at least two in a rec center and two in a school next year. And we will come up with... Dr. Bracy, if you can explore two rec centers, and then we can look at two schools in two of the zones. We've done elementary, high school, and middle school. So that's something that we can look at. Okay?
Can I ask another question as well?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm looking at the School Board Annual Retreat right now is scheduled for August 7 and 8. I would like for us to look at moving the date to the previous weekend, number one, because on my calendar up until May, June, I had it for the first week of September. I mean, shucks, the first week of August. And I think that's... And I know that we had to move it for different reasons, but also, too, is that the last Friday that staff has off? Because I know this retreat fell on the last Friday off for the three-day weekends for the 10-day work week. I would like to at least let them enjoy their last three-day weekend, if that is their last day off. And I would also wonder, do we have flexibility to do it on a Thursday night where staff could stay back and then do part of the retreat on Friday, rather than doing it Friday, Saturday? And I know we do Friday, Saturday because we want the public to be involved and we want attendance. However, public attendance physically is not there. They have options to do it online. They have options to watch different live streaming events. And so since normally, the first day of retreat, we do the principals and the SOL scores...
At night.
At night. If we moved it to a Thursday night, Friday, that would at least give staff, if we wanted to keep it on 7 and 8, their last three-day weekend. But I think a Friday night and Saturday is a bit antiquated for what we need. But that's just my thought. So I would really look at... I would like to see it different.
That's the first week in August. The 7 and 8 is the first week in August.
Okay.
But that's something that we can discuss and adopt at the September meeting.
There was also discussion about a one-day option as well.
Because we could have had, I mean, based on all of your recommendations, and we really didn't know how much time that it was gonna take.
Right.
Really could have had it all day Saturday, or... Because by the time I got there Saturday, y'all had really gone through half the... Bless you. You've gone through half the agenda. So we got out early. And nobody likes to give up their Saturday.
Right. And I think, too, if we did it on a Thursday, when staff is already here, that mitigates some of the need for staff to come back on a different day or stay late. So I would just like to see us looking at updating summer retreats.
Ms. Allen, what are your feelings?
I don't have an issue with us doing it on a Thursday. I like to see a little bit more packed into our retreat. And I guess that's a conversation for a later time.
Okay. All right. Mr. Barnes, what are your thoughts? You're open to Thursday? Okay. Well, that's something we can talk about, because we'll adopt that in September. Yep. All right. Keep that up in mind. Now...
I'm sorry. One other thing. On January 9, it says annual reorganization meeting. Is that the only thing we're doing? Or does that need to have special meeting, public work session on it as well?
Normally, that is the only item, according to the state code. I mean, we've had other items, but that's the only item.
I just didn't know if we needed to put a public work session attached to it, because we normally do a meeting after.
We do. I thought because we have disciplinary things and things of that nature.
Any business that we need to do that first meeting?
Just add it to it. You only have two meetings, that one, and then you have the regular meeting afterwards.
Okay. The last thing.
Okay.
Discipline committee. Is that, I mean, taking into account all these school board meetings, and I say all of them, but we do get sessions where everything gets bunched up. I just wanna make sure that we can... I wanna say attack discipline, but that's just that we can handle discipline in a more timely manner than...
As a full board.
Correct. However, because we still haven't decided what we're doing about discipline. So, but I'm looking at that April 9 to April 30, and then the 7 to May 21. That's usually where we get into it because of spring break. And then we usually get into it in December, January because of the break. So I just wanna make sure going into 2020 that we have a way to handle said discipline.
Okay. All right. All right. Next item, Dr. Ziegler.
Thank you. And good segue, because speaking of morale, moving the retreat off of a Saturday would help with morale at your administrator ranks as well. Especially because it usually falls on one's anniversary. So I appreciate you all excusing me this weekend as well.
College move-in day.
And college move-in day as well.
Yep, because you left and I can move him in.
This evening, I'm gonna talk about teacher morale surveys, which is a bit ironic because we do not currently administer a teacher morale survey. So I'm gonna give some background about how I believe this wound on the agenda. It was originally slated for the retreat and then moved to today. And then give the board some options for ad hoc advice of what we could do in the future. So as I said, we don't currently administer a staff morale survey. In May 2019, we did receive a FOIA request for the 2017-2018 exit survey results. And that was from a representative from Virginia Organizing. And the board will remember that I presented the results from the 2017-2018 exit survey at the board retreat in August of 2018. And I also presented more detailed information in a recruitment and retention report in November of 2018. So it was information that the board had. That information was then used to craft a letter to the editor that appeared in the July 3 edition of the Virginian Pilot. And also, we had a speaker at a board meeting, I think in May or April, that read a letter from an anonymous teacher that purported to say things like the teachers, and the letter said this as well, that teachers were leaving Portsmouth due to a lack of respect, a lack of support, a lack of supplies, increased workload, meaningless professional development, lack of opportunity, and poor communication. The writer of the letter implied, didn't directly say it, that the exit survey data supported his assertions in that letter. However, the letter was based on a misrepresentation of the data that was given to Virginia Organizing. There's nowhere in the exit survey where respondents are asked to rank the reason they're leaving from Portsmouth Public Schools. As you know from my previous presentations, the exit survey uses a Likert scale for teachers and retirees, not just teachers, but all employees who are leaving or separating from the division, to rate their response to specific statements with either not applicable, strongly disagree, disagree, neither agree nor disagree, agree or strongly agree. So there's no way to get a top 10 list from that. The only question that pertains to why you are leaving Portsmouth Public Schools is the same reasons that are listed on our resignation form. Things like leaving the area, took another job in another school division, leaving education, personal reasons, retirement, things like that. So for the time period that was given to Virginia Organizing as a result of the FOIA release, you'll see that the results kind of, I don't wanna say contradict, but are interpreted differently and more accurately when we look at how many people are leaving Portsmouth with a positive outlook. So 81% of respondents that were covered in that FOIA had a good working relationship with their supervisor at the time they left. 75% of respondents believed they were treated fairly and equitably by their supervisors in the school division. 72% believe that job tasks were fairly and equitably distributed at their school. 80% believe they were fairly evaluated. 75% believe there were opportunities for professional development. And 69% believe that compensation was adequate and comparable with other school divisions in the area. There was the lowest response on questions like morale at my school is good. We didn't have as high agreement to that statement. But even on communication, people believed, I'm sorry, I said compensation. Gotta get my own abbreviations. Believed communication was adequate. And most believe that compensation was comparable with other Region 2 school divisions. So I can understand why that letter to the editor followed, so closely followed the anonymous letter that was led to, read to the school board, would give the school board reason to pause and to ask these questions. And they are good questions to ask. So what I've done today is I've come with some options to present to the board and seek direction on how we should proceed. Beginning last year, the Commonwealth of Virginia has produced, through Virginia Department of Education, a working condition survey, which was a big pilot year. It was piloted the year before, but a broader pilot year last year in that it was not required in the spring. Portsmouth Public Schools Administration can take the stance that we're going to direct our school principals to administer that working condition survey at every school. This year, it was conducted at all but six of the schools. There is no cost to the school division for that, and we get all of the results. Usually, and then I would present those results in quarter one of the following year. So the window for the surveys ends in March. We usually get the results in May. The board would adjourn for the summer, and then I would present then, probably around October, because our September agenda is usually pretty packed. The other option that the board could choose, or direct administration to do, is we could contract with a consultant who specializes in employee engagement and morale. I have spoken and met at least one vendor who does that type of work and had him give me an ad hoc, non-binding estimate to do the division. And that would be about $25,000 for survey design and help with interpreting the results and data presentation. But we would be responsible for delivering that survey and collecting the responses from... They don't have a mechanism to deliver the survey. So I think these are good questions to ask. I'm encouraged by the working condition survey that's given out, because I know at least one other Region 2 school division used to do an in-house morale survey or working condition survey. And based on the results they saw from the state survey, they're no longer gonna do it in-house. They're going to use the Commonwealth's version. And that's my recommendation, is that we direct principals to administer that at their schools, and we use those results to report out on employee morale.
Once upon a time, we hired a firm to do an independent morale study. And I prefer that it be done by an independent firm. Now, I understand you would send out all the information, gather it, turn it all over to an independent... $25,000 is not a lot of money, and let them do it. I think that you take the bias away, because the bottom line is that people are gonna say, "Well, you did it in-house." And anyway, I think that if you remove it, and it's totally independent by a firm that does this kind of thing, I think you'll have a great deal. I think, one, I think people will respect the data. And then you won't be, your staff or the board will not be accused of, "Well, it's, you know, pure bias, and you've made this..." This is your report. But the bottom line is that you have that independent firm come in, and it worked very well. Ms. Hines?
I just, I wanna clarify something. The $25,000 is just for writing the survey. It is not for administering, or collecting, or doing any data interpretation, correct? We would still have to put out and delineate the data.
It includes... I don't know if I brought it up.
Because what I heard you say, it was only for the creation. We would still have to break it down and receive the answers.
I'm sorry. I wasn't clear on...
Send out, and then collect it, and then give it to them.
Right. Based on the two questions that are before me now, I wasn't clear on either one of these. Both of these are independent agencies doing and interpreting the survey data, doing the mathematics behind it. All we do with the state survey is we send out the link and the password to the survey. And then our hands are off, and the state sends us the results. With the independent contractor, and of course, this would necessarily go to RFP, because I don't think we could just do a sole source or anything like that. So that would depend on the parameters of the RFP. The independent estimate that I have now includes survey creation, data interpretation, data presentation... The independent estimate that I have now includes survey creation, data interpretation, data presentation, and training, could include training for the school administration, presentation to the school board, and training for principals. It does not include a mechanism to deliver the survey. So it would, by default, if this company was selected, it would look like our platform was giving the survey. So we would actually have less of an independent look. Using this particular vendor, that doesn't mean every vendor is not going to, you know, some may have their own. And we would then just send out the link.
Right. Ms. Hunt?
In my full-time job, I take the state. That's one thing that we do, and that state evaluation is about 100 questions. And it covers everything from your personal interactions to the lighting, and is your school kept? And how do you feel about where you work? How do you, you know? And it's 100 questions. Is it a little ti, it's about 100 questions. Is it a little timely? Yes. Do people get keyboard courage? Yes. But they're going to get keyboard courage with anything because you'll say anything to a computer that you wouldn't say to anybody's face. But I think, to me, it's a, it's a, it's a good, well-rounded survey that the state gives. And if it's free and it can be pushed out, and we, I say, go for it and save the RFP for when we get the holy moly, I didn't realize this was an issue.
Right.
You know, and kind of dive deeper into that specific area that we need to dive deeper to as a, as a school division. But I think the one from the state, I think it's going to give us a good overall brush stroke to get it, to get our feet wet and to get a, to get a pulse on what is going on. And I think too, morale is, it's one of those things, negative Nellies are everywhere. And it just depends on who you hear and who you're around. I mean, your, my year changes depending on who my next door, next door neighbor teachers are. And so I think sometimes the, and I'm not diminishing anybody's actual gripe. I don't, that's not what I want to say.
I understand.
But when we get things, we have to understand where they are and where they're coming from. Because otherwise, it becomes a Chicken Little, the sky is falling, and we've got to do something right now. Right. So I personally feel okay going with the, with the free one and the state one to get a, to get a pulse and a, and a broad stroke.
Ms. Allen, how do you feel?
I concur. I'm okay with that.
Okay. Mr. Barnes, how do you feel?
Well, I actually like the independent one. And that's because I've actually been talking to some of our teachers and principals that have left. And there were some concerns that they've expressed to me that I would really, that, that's the reason.
And the state is independent. So we just don't pay for that. It's just done, we just, the teachers fill it out online.
Right.
I mean, think about it, when you go out for dinner, I got waiters that they want me to, you know, and I fill out an evaluation because they get credit.
Right.
One of them is going to get a, if you gave me a good report, I was going to, I was almost ready to get a trip to the Bahamas.
Right. Mr. Z, can I ask one more question? Mr. Ziegler, the state survey, and I don't know if you know this per se. When the teachers fill it out, do we get a notification that we're like 90% completed at this school or 70% completed with this school or?
I get raw numbers on the number of completed surveys based on job code. So I will get, by school, it would be broken down by administration, instructional staff, and support staff. I get the raw numbers, not the percentage.
That's a good question. That, I would want to know that.
But it's, I don't get any other raw data. So everything else I get is aggregate. So it's not, I can't see if Mr. Falk submitted a survey.
Right.
And I know we got one administrative response from the elementary school. I can't pull up that administrative survey and then say, oh, well, there's only one. So I know this has to be his responses.
Right.
So I get the, the numbers, but everything else is aggregate.
Okay.
There's no way, based on the information that's presented, for me to determine an individual respondent.
Okay.
But getting back to her question, I would want to know the percentage by school. So if I take this survey, what I indicate, where is it that it indicates my school?
By your password.
By your password.
Password. So we would know, like 70% of the teachers completed the survey at school aid.
We could figure, we would figure that locally, the percentages, because they don't have our, our staff rosters.
Okay.
They just give us an email, send this to the staff. At Victory Elementary School, it has a unique password for them. They click the link, put in that password.
Got it.
And then if we got, I'd say, 30 responses and there's 45 teachers at Victory, we would do that math and be able to report on the percent of respondents.
But I think, I personally get an email about every other day for about two weeks. Make sure this is done, make sure this is done. And there was also one, too, that we did last year in my full-time job about it. It's a student survey, like a student climate survey, like a student morale kind of survey. I don't know if that would be anything that would, we would be interested in doing.
We do that as well.
Okay.
It's a school safety and climate survey.
Okay.
It's presented as, this year, it was presented as mandatory for middle, middle schools.
Okay.
Middle school. And so every year, it's presented as mandatory for a certain grade level and optional for other grade levels.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Let's run on into your next one. Teacher vacancies.
Teacher vacancies. So we have been working very hard in human resources this year to bring down our vacancy rate. We have held so far two walk-in interview sessions for certified teachers and for bus drivers. They have been very well attended. In fact, the last one had a line that was so long, I had to pull additional staff to do the interviews.
That's wonderful.
We had, at the beginning of the day, 30 people waiting at 10 o'clock to come in. And it's a good mix between certified staff and bus drivers. Some are exploring, and they're not quite ready to be certified yet. But many, we've hired, I think, out of those six or seven direct hires out of the walk-in interviews. So those are folks that we probably would not have met otherwise. We've also increased kind of our social media presence. We've done some advertising this year to promote the walk-in interviews. So all said, we started the year with, the summer with about 160 vacancies. We are down to 67 vacancies, which, these are instructional vacancies, which I know that number sounds scary, but it is a 6.3 vacancy rate. We typically run at about a 10 or 11% vacancy rate through the year. So we are starting the year better off than we did last year. We have one more walk-in interview day on the 21st that we've already started promoting. And so we hope to continue to fill these positions right up until school starts. If we break that down, we have 50 elementary vacancies, the majority of which are classroom teacher level. We have five middle school vacancies. They're all at a single middle school. Churchland is fully staffed, and Waters is fully staffed.
But it's Kratic.
It's Kratic. And he is still working on those with his staffing specialists, so I'm confident that many of those will be filled. We have seven high school vacancies. Wilson is fully staffed. We have four preschool vacancies and one alternative education vacancy. Of this, of the 67 total vacancies, seven are special ed classroom teachers, and two are math teachers. So again, in other areas where they run kind of hard, we stay ahead of the ball as far as that goes. And our bus driver vacancies has been going up and down all summer. We were down to about 10, and because of resignations, we're up to about 16. And here we are not protected by, we have a Region 2 gentleman's agreement, the superintendents do, that after July 15th, we won't poach each other's teachers. We don't have a similar, we don't have a similar agreement for bus drivers. And I believe some of our neighbors are offering hiring purposes. So another thing that we're going to pilot this year because all the data coming in shows that the teacher shortage is going to continue into the immediate future. So we are partnering with a company called Proximity Learning. And Proximity Learning puts a certified teacher, Virginia certified teacher, in front of a classroom of students. And there's no real good term for it because if I say distance education, that brings certain pictures to your mind. If I say online education, that brings another type of picture in your mind. But what I, what I would really say is a virtual teacher where the teacher is live every day, every class session, in front of the students via electronic transmission. That's kind of sounds like I'm in.
Well, who's in the classroom that's going to make sure the kids don't?
So there is a monitor in the classroom.
Oh, okay.
Who is trained by Proximity Learning on how to, not facilitate, but how to monitor that environment. Direct instruction is given every day. The teachers make sure that the student's camera is on so the teacher can see the students and all of the students can see the teacher. And the students wear headsets so that they can interact with the teacher. Many school divisions across the Commonwealth are using Proximity Learning, especially in urban school divisions. Petersburg has had great success with Proximity Learning, even at the elementary level. And we're not piloting at the elementary level. This year, we will do one section of biology first semester at Churchland High School. And at Waters Middle School, we're doing the equivalent of one FTE to do seventh grade civics, which is four class periods a day. Instruction takes part, it's live instruction, and then independent practice every day is their general lesson plan. They will teach the Virginia SOLs, and their pass rate is as good or better than a live teacher, according to the company's data. And the school divisions that I've called that recommend, and Dr. Bracy has talked to several superintendents that recommend Proximity Learning, we're hearing good results.
Can we have one, at least one at Kratic? Because that's where the weak link is. I mean, Churchland, I mean.
Waters is fully staffed.
Yeah.
They're, fully staffed includes this proximity teacher. But we can, we can add classrooms at any time.
You've got five, you've got five at Kratic.
Right. Let me, let me have a conversation with Dr. Carey. Because it's a pilot, we were doing volunteer principals. But I'm more than happy to have a conversation with, with Dr. Carey and see if he's interested in putting Proximity in one of those.
As long as that's okay with Dr. Bracy.
Ma'am?
As long as that's okay with Dr. Bracy. I mean, I.
It's fine with, with me. If we keep the schools that have asked for it and increase it, then we may have to come back and present this as an RFP because it's going to exceed the threshold.
Oh, well, then, right now, we're below the, the board vote requirement.
Okay.
As far as cost goes.
And we have substitutes, we're going to have substitutes in these classrooms.
That's correct.
Yes, ma'am.
Are there any agencies or anything that we can work with in regards to hiring drivers? I don't know whether substitute drivers are folks that may already have their CDLs that are looking to pick up extra work, maybe like truck drivers or something that just want to pick up some extra, extra work to offset some of the loss of bus drivers we have?
I'm not aware of any that place substitute bus drivers. There are several that do substitute teachers, but I don't know of any that do substitute bus drivers. The federal requirements for bus drivers are more stringent than to drive a semi or to drive a dump truck, a normal CDL. There's additional drug testing and physical fitness requirements. And so it's, it would be difficult for an agency to maintain the testing requirements. And then also, anybody who drives for us has to be on our random drug test list. And they have to be, we have to pull a certain number of names per month. I'm not sure what the number is. But, and those folks have to present themselves at the testing facility within an hour of being notified.
And what about bus drivers versus contracted services? That we hire a, a company that provides transportation and just, I mean, at one time, we looked at that. And of course, the bus drivers were very upset, but the bottom line is that.
Right. We got to get the kids from point A to point B.
We can look at that. That would involve issuing an RFP for transportation services. I know it is a growing trend in other states. It hasn't really caught on in Virginia. We've had, back when I had operations department, I had some conversations. And I don't know if Mr. Whiting has had more recent conversations. But the last I talked with, First Student Transportation, and their 20,000-foot estimate, which was not an official response to an RFP, was that they wanted our entire transportation budget plus the $1 million that, that was in the CIP budget.
Right.
So it's a pretty expensive.
Right. And I do believe that there was, was it Roanoke City or Roanoke County a few years ago? They actually had somebody come in and contract for their buses. And they had to sell all of their buses to the contract company so that if you ever leave that contracting company, you are without.
Yes, ma'am.
School buses. And so that was a little, you know, both your eyebrows go up on that one and you scratch your head. But everybody's financials are different, so I don't want to, I'm just saying that was part of the, and I would be hesitant to do that.
Well, there is, I know.
You just need to look at all options.
Richmond has contracted Special Education Transportation to First Student. I'm surprised they sold the buses because I think there is a provision in state code that says that the buses have to be owned by the locality. So that, that would be difficult. We did, when I talked to First Student, we did talk about that. And so we would have, had we gone that route, we would have leased our buses to First Student.
Right.
And so we would have still been the owner of the buses. There are some advantages. They get better prices on gas. They get better prices on repairs. I don't know that their fill rate is any better, but all of our bus drivers would be laid off if we, if we did that.
Yes, ma'am?
Are we done? It's, it's for Mr. Ziegler, but it's not transportation. It's not school buses. Is there any way that we can get a sub, a sub rate for last year's school year?
Yes.
As far as like elementary, middle, or high? Do you do it that way, or do you just do a percentage of?
Any day you walk in my office, it's posted every day.
Okay.
I only do it for the school division.
Okay. Because I would, I would like to know whether it would be beneficial for us to contract out substitute, what is it? Services to make, to see if we can get a higher fill rate. Because I know we do talk a lot about substitutes and not having substitutes. And some of our buildings are harder to sub, fill with subs than others. And so I don't know if having a deeper pool would be something that we need to look at.
Okay.
Same thing with hiring teachers. Some teachers, some schools are easier to hire for than others.
Okay.
So.
All right. Next item is discussion, policy changes, graduation, and facility rental. Who is that?
I think that was, that one, Ms. Atkinson.
Do you want to?
These were.
Three-point, yeah.
These were items that were given to us.
That was hers.
And this one, we wanted to bring to make sure we had an understanding of what that entail.
Why don't we move 3.10 to the September meeting?
Okay.
Okay. Is that all right with board members? Ma'am? Yes. 3.11 is elementary extracurricular activities. I forgot who brought that up.
I believe that was me.
Yes.
Sir?
Mr. Vaughn.
Mr. Vaughn, you brought that up?
Yes.
All right.
Well, one of the reasons behind this was, I know we had, it was like three basketball games where our elementary schools had played one another. And the, the crowds were very good. And somebody who runs a youth program, the, the purpose of it is to keep our children out of trouble. So I think if both our schools provide extracurricular activities for our elementary kids, this is an opportunity to get our kids when they're very young so we can keep them out of trouble. And it also saves money in the long term.
Is this after school or during the school?
After.
After school. Okay. Something we look at. All right. Well, we have gone through everything except 3.2, and that's board members' reports.
I've got a couple of questions I need to ask, not necessarily a report.
All right. Go ahead.
Mr. Ziegler, while you're here, I had a question from a parent asking about the app code or the district code for Here Comes the Bus. Have we posted codes for Here Comes the Bus apps? Where can they find them?
I'll defer to Mr. Whiting on that.
We are, that equipment is being, we just received it this week. It's, they're supposed to start installing it next week. We should be going through training, the transportation department, and we're looking, we missed our last goal. We want to get more out. So that will probably.
So is this an app on my phone?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
Is it up and running by, say, PTA open houses?
I promised us it would be up and running by the time school starts.
Okay. So, when it is up and running, where can parents look for that information? On our website, on the school's website?
The school's website.
Both? Okay. All right.
And you all got the information about, I think, yep, Lauren's still here, and Kathy Bridges is no longer publishing our agenda in the paper.
Okay.
It goes away, so the only option we have is that she's posted, Lauren's going to post it on our webpage. Yes?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to know why the, why-
I don't know. Kathy?
They sent me an email. Let me see if I can pull it up, something about, something they were doing, and we no longer publish them. Let me see if I can find it.
We don't pay anything for that, right?
Yeah, it's free service.
So, I think they cut the free stuff out.
So, they're not doing suffixes either, then?
That I don't know. She just sent it to me. I don't even know if they're still doing the cities, and they were doing the cities for free, as we believe.
So, we don't have any other option but to put it on our, put it on our webpage?
It's always been on the webpage. Put it on a calendar, so when you open it up, you see.
We just need a way to let the public know, because if people look at Bridges, and they say, "Well, where did that go?" I mean, where is the agenda? Bottom line is that-
Long before we did Bridges, it was always on the web.
Right. Okay.
And then, you notify the paper.
Right.
And that was what we were supposed to do.
We'll get your question?
Mm-hmm.
Go ahead.
Put it on our Facebook, too, correct?
Yeah. Ms.?
Well, I had a different question.
Sure.
For the open houses and things that are coming up?
Right.
Will the bus routes be available? That was a big thing last year. As people were coming out to the open houses, they were saying, "I wish I knew, you know, what route my kid was going to be on." How much information, or as much information as possible, is going to be made aware to parents, so that they can prepare for first day of school? Because those open houses tend to be very well-attended, and that was one of the main concerns that I heard as I attended open houses last year, was about the buses, especially for new kids switching schools, and new kids coming into the schools.
So, are you talking about, like, the back-to-school day, where they go before school opens? Or are you talking about the-
Correct.
Okay, so, in my brain, I'm like, well, they should know what the bus is on PTA, but that back-to-school day on that Friday before-
Like, the 28th, I think, or the beginning of them?
Yeah.
We received some information on that.
I found the email. She says, "Due to changes with our community sections, including Bridges, we would no longer be publishing school board agendas after September 1. Thanks so much for your help and understanding with this."
She really didn't give a reason. She just said-
She just said, "Due to changes with our community sections."
Well, it's got to be money.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Yep.
This is from the senior content manager.
The bus routes will be ready for publishing on the 25th.
On the 25th?
Yes.
Okay.
Publish on the website? Publish on the school site?
It'll be ready.
I'm just asking, because I know I'm going to get questions.
Put them on the school website, and any other way we can have it published.
So, what, right, so what the parents do, they go in and they put their address in, and it will let you know what bus you ride.
Okay.
Can we make sure that those are available, a hard copy, for those who want it at the open houses?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, you don't have to make a million copies, but for those who want a hard copy, or don't have access to internet, or whatever the case may be, so that they can have a copy.
Because there was a time and a place where you'd walk in, and you'd get a sheet like this, and it would be all the bus numbers for that school, so it would be-
Right.
-bus 102, bus 219, bus 347.
And we paid for, we paid for that to be published in the newspaper. Is that something we can do again?
Is that? You understand what I'm saying?
I was asking for something to be on-site.
Oh, yeah. And we get it both ways. We get it in newspaper, and we get it a hard copy.
But I just think if, when you walk into the school on that back-to-school day on that Friday, if you can get a bus sheet for your, for your school.
I know, in, I forgot what they call it, but they had a list of each school, and they had the principal, the assistant principal, and then they had the bus schedule, and that was done the week prior to school. I don't even think they do that anymore.
I haven't seen that many days.
We had, well, we had to pay for that.
Yeah.
We paid for that.
So, can, we can do it on a piece of paper for the house?
Right. I do have another, I've got two more questions. One more, two more questions. The 10 minutes that we added to each day, I just want to make sure that we understand that that is in recess time, because I'll have a heartbroken little kid if he doesn't come home with 30 minutes of recess the first day of school, because, you know, I told him he was going to have an extra 10 minutes of recess.
We're not taking it from recess.
No, we added it.
We added to-
We added it for recess.
We added it for recess. So, every elementary school should have 25, 30 minutes of recess a day at minimum?
I think it's 25.
25.
Okay. And with that, and I asked Dr. Bracy this one day, as we were waiting around for something, with adding seven or eight days to the calendar, we don't have to make up any more weather days, ever, because the threshold, once you miss five days, you don't have to make them up. And so, even if we miss one or two days because of snow, or a hurricane, man-made, or governor-made, or nature-made, then we don't have to make those days up either. So, we are pretty much mitigating makeup days.
Right.
So, we get to be one of those divisions that don't have to hold their breath-
Right.
...and see which holiday is being taken away because we had a random snow day.
That's right.
These are all things that, as you sit back and process, and you have people talk to you about, that you just want to make sure that you understand, so.
Right.
Okay. And the other thing is, and Mr. Falk, you probably will know this, and I'm reading